Okay, it's 1:30, it's time of the record for a planning hearing today, we're gonna hear file VA 0036-21. And before we start, is there anybody that has any hearing or visual impairment that might smell? Vince Scott, no? Nobody? Okay. Let's quickly go over, for those that haven't been involved in a hearing like this, what the hearing looks like. Staff's gonna go ahead and present a report. The applicant can also get up, and well, in this case, it's the appellant. Anyway, someone's gonna get up and give an overview of why we're here. Then we'll open it up to public testimony. We'll start with those in support, those neutral, and those opposed. Everybody gets three minutes. Try to keep your words to the actual subject matter, kind of to very wary off everyone's behavior. Treat each other with respect, no personal attacks unless it's personally attacking our attorney, then that's okay. Just kidding, that's not okay. And then there'll be an opportunity for rebuttal, and then we'll close public comment and the commissioners will deliberate. For the record, Commissioner's kindly, Commissioner McDonald are present today, Commissioner Bradshaw is excused. With that, we will go ahead and turn it over to staff.
Conflict.
Oh, conflict.
Commissioner Connolly has no conflict.
Okay, Commissioner McDonald have no conflict.
And members of the public, we are here for a public hearing of file VA 0036-21. It is a request for a lot size minimum administrative variance requesting to reduce the lot size by 20% in AF10 zone. So the proposal is to lower the minimum lot size to eight acres where 10 acre is required by code. The requested deviation in lot sizes is a minimum of 20% reduction. It is not a request for a zone change or land division. This request has no impact on the zoning or land use designation of the property. Site is currently being used for residential and agricultural purposes. It has a total of approximately 40 acres of unflatted land. Direct access from Fish Creek Road, which is a county-owned and maintained public right-of-way. It has direct access by a 40-foot, 40-feet-wide private easement, which is being used for ingress egress and utilities. The current land use designation is agriculture forest land, and the zoning designation is agricultural forestry 10 district. Site shows presence of wetlands and intermittent streams, soils are classified as non-prime farmland. Flood hazard zone is X, floodplain review is not required. And no critical wildlife habitats were identified by any local state or federal agencies. It is currently being served by an individual well, an individual septic system. It will have access to Selkirk Fire District, Avista Utilities, Lake Pondre School District 84, Pondre Hospital District, Bonner County Ambulance District. This request was notified to several public agencies, which are listed here on the screen. Idaho Department of Fish and Game replied, saying they do not have any comments to submit for this application. Panhandle Health District would like to encourage the applicant to contact PSC prior to proceeding, as the only way to know if sanitary services as proposed will be adequate for this project. Department of Environmental Quality has no environmental impact comments at this stage. And Idaho Department of Lands replied with no comments. We did not receive any other comments from other public agencies that were notified. These were some of the concerns that were raised by the public. Setting precedent, opposition to rezoning, personal need for variance, inadequate water supply for domestic use and fire suppression, emergency vehicle ingress egress, no power utility, negative increase in auto traffic on Fish Creek Road, destruction of forest and wildlife, lower property values in the area, and request inconsistent with the neighborhood. These are the Bonner County Revised Code standards against which this file was reviewed. The purpose of this request is to grant relief from strict restriction, strict application of the provisions of the title where proposal conforms to the standards of Title 12 of Chapter 2.3 Variants. So we will go over those standards now. There are three standard conditions against which a variance's, variance proposal is evaluated. The first condition is this, conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. The topographical properties of this site do not generally apply to other properties in the vicinity, as other properties may have different types of soils, they may have different type of slopes. Wetlands access to the site. So the, the, these conditions that are listed over here are in particular applicable only to this site. The site is physically suitable to accommodate these eight-acre lots based on these factors. No presence of steep slopes, 100% of the site is covered in non-prime farmland soils. There are no critical wildlife habitat areas that have been identified by public agencies. The site has access from Fish Creek Road, which is a Bonner County-owned and maintained right-of-way, which is about 1.1 mile away from the, from the subject site. It has direct access via 40-feet-wide private easement. The location is in a 500-year floodplain zone X, so it doesn't require any further floodplain review. It does not have limited access to public services such as Selkirk Fire District, Bonner County Ambulance District, Pondre Hospital District, and Bonner School District 84. The second condition is this, special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The topographical conditions on the site are not a result of the applicant's actions. These parcels were bought in their current size orientation and topography in the, in year 2017, as exists today. Again, the site is physically suitable to accommodate eight-acre lots, five of them, based on these conditions. The granting of this variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot. The staff received comments from the public with concerns regarding zoning, increased residential density, increased traffic, etc. None of the comments stated evidence of how the granting of this variance was immediately detrimental to their, to the public health, safety, or welfare, or would be materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel. We did not receive any comments from the public agencies with any concerns regarding public health or safety. With the recommended conditions of approval, the applicant would be limited to 15 dwelling units on the entire 40-acre unflatted parcel where 16 are currently permitted by right. Staff assesses no adverse impacts to the neighborhood as granting of this variance with recommended conditions of approval will result in a slight decrease in the total possible residential density by replacement of two RV dwelling units with single, one single-family dwelling unit. The request will not change the current zoning or the current land use designation of the property, and thus the use, uses permitted on the property remain the same as permitted by the current code. This is a graphic to show how the density may look like. So this is what, what is currently permitted. Two RV dwelling units, one accessory dwelling unit, and one single-family dwelling unit on four parcels, 10-acre parcels, which will result in a total density of 16 dwelling units. And this is what it may look like if the request were to be granted today, which is one ADU, one RV dwelling unit, and one single-family dwelling unit on five eight-acre parcels, which will result in a total density of 15 dwelling units. With that, staff recommends approval of the, of the request, subject to conditions of approval. We will go over the findings of facts and conclusions of law based on which the staff reached this recommendation. Property currently exists has two unflatted parcels of land totaling an area of 40 acres, each parcel being approximately 20 acres in size. The southern parcel is developed with a single-family residence, while the northern parcel is currently undeveloped. The zone of the property is AF10 and land use designation is agriculture forest land. The current zoning would allow a density of 16, total 16 dwelling units and 40 acres of land as per the current code. It has access to Fish Creek Road, which is a public, public right-of-way, and direct access through a 40-feet-wide private easement. The properties are accessed by, I've already discussed this, I apologize. So only 1%, approximately 1% of the site has slopes that are over 30% in grade. More, the rest of the site has either moderate slopes or no slopes at all. The entire site contains single, single-silt loam soils, which are classified as non-prime farmland soils with a drainage classification of somewhat poorly drained. It is located in flood hazard zone X and would not require any further floodplain review. It does not have any floodways on it either. It does not contain any critical wildlife habitats, as identified any, as identified by any agencies. Currently served by an individual well and septic system and has access to other services as well. So these are the conclusions of law that staff came to after reviewing the file. Conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity and over which the applicant has no control. Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and the granting of this variance is not in conflict with the public interest. These are the conditions of approval if the board were to approve this request today. This variance will not supersede any deed restrictions. The deed restrictions for each of the five parcels or lots that are to be created in the future, they would have this restriction on, on them that they could only be developed with single-family, one single-family dwelling unit, one accessory dwelling unit, and one RV dwelling unit. The condition, condition A3 has been slightly modified to match condition A2. There was a typo in the staff report. So, condition A3 reads like this, upon submission of the short plot division application or, or any other land division application for these properties, a plat note shall be added that restricts the density of each proposed parcel to one single-family dwelling, one accessory dwelling unit, and one RV dwelling unit. Or proposed lot to ensure housing density does not exceed the comprehensive plan goals of AF10 zoning. That concludes my presentation, I can take any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks, Wendy. Commissioner Connolly, have any questions for staff?
Oh, wait.
How long would you like to be?
Well, we hear all, all the different sides of this thing.
So?
But I will have a couple of questions, for sure.
You have a question, sir? Okay. Okay, cool, thank you. So this is an appeal, should we go to the applicant first? Okay, so the, so the applicant first, applicant's representative or owner of the property, are they here?
I am the representative.
Would you like to say a few words?
Um, so, for those who may not be entirely familiar with me, I, my name is James Griffin. I am the third son of my parents, Roger and Avis Griffin, who are the property owners. And I'm not sure really how deep and detailed to go, but basically, this appeal is just because, honestly, they have us, five of us, five kids, and they'd like to leave some land on split, some for each of us, which is common customary, I mean, if you go back in history. And so, that is something that, as currently restricted by the zoning laws and regulations, is not permitted, but it's something that they want to do for their kids. And something that, as the staff report has concluded, is not deleterious to the neighborhood. And so that's what, that's what they'd like to do, and as best can be done, that's really their goal. I don't know if there are any other comments specifically needed from them. I do have an email from my mom, who could not be here today medically speaking. So if this is appropriate, I'll go ahead and read that.
Absolutely.
So basically, she wants, she does not want to change the zoning in terms of the circumstance. She wants a forest in good health. She does not, you know, my parents, my dad's previous career has been dealing with mitigating or averting pollution, whether that's water pollution, hazardous waste pollution, air pollution. So they're very much opposed to pollution. And they want, again, a, a healthy, growing, you know, culture of the, the forest, and they're not trying to do this to alter that, to change that, to develop it. They're opposed to that. Again, they want, they'd like to pass it down to the family, but in ways that it's easier to maintain. So for example, yeah, theoretically, we could, each proposed new parcel could have a prime dwelling unit on it. That's, I can, obviously can't say what's going to happen, but that's not likely to happen, given the fact that among the family, that's already been more or less dismissed. Some of us want to keep it as untouched, except for, you know, forest maintenance, for hunting, or, you know, game, things like that. So there wouldn't be any development happening. Others, yeah, it might be nice to have a cabin in the woods or something like that, but that may or may not be necessary. It also may be a question of time, money that is not available. And so the goal is to make it easier to manage, to split up as, as wanted. But they love this land, they love the, the parcel. I mean, you know, where else can you open the window and find a moose staring in? So, and that actually happened to my mom. She looked out the kitchen window, and there's a moose face-to-face with her. So, um.
Actually, in this area.
It's common. But, you know, from their background, that's hasn't been common, cured for, and then they love it. They love the area, and so, you know, that's really, you know, they, they want to provide for their kids, us. And that's, that's why they are requesting this.
Any questions for the applicant? You're good, thank you. Okay, Mr. Quail.
The three-minute, it's gotten me off guard.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you time, since you're, since you're actually the one requesting the.
And Brian doesn't do, well, it was just three minutes, I don't think.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Brian, we all know you. In fact, I'm already, I'm already ordering dinner as we speak. So Brian, it's to you. Yeah, I figured since you were the one challenging the variance, that we would give you some time.
Thank you, wow, I got.
Three and a half minutes.
Three and a half minutes, well.
No, you have, you have whatever time you need.
I have my wife here, so she'll be glad to donate.
So watch our body language, if you see us getting bored, then, yeah, no. Just kidding.
In all seriousness, thank you for the time, I appreciate it. I take this opportunity very seriously, and I don't take an, an appeal lightly either. So good afternoon, for the record, I'm Brian Quail. I'm here at the request of my brother and his family. My brother purchased the property directly north of the subject property back in 1973, and it's served by the same access easement as the subject property. We built the first road up the easement in 1974. The work was done using pickup trucks, chainsaws, and hand tools. We constructed logs, log box culverts for the two drainage crossings. We replaced those in the 90s with some metal ones, but point being, it was all handwork. In mud season, it gets bad enough that we would use a Pulaski along the entire length to knock down the side walls of the rut, so we could maintain non-damaging drainage and drive our vehicles in and out. And you get to know the characteristics of a property quite well under those type of circumstances. So we're here today to request that the board reverse an administrative determination and to steer away from the dangerous precedent. Granting parcel size variances based upon personal financial desires and the number of family members is inappropriate and defies legal justifications for zoning and land use regulations. It ignores the hours upon hours of effort that has gone into the zoning of this area over the years. And recently, the county initiated the sub-area zoning efforts and solicited input and established zoning recommendations. Area landowners took the time to become informed, and some attended the meetings. Area landowners were generally satisfied with this area's proposal as it kept the subject area requiring 10-acre minimum parcel sizes. That proposal did not include a provision that administrative decision would allow up to a 30% reduction. The Griffin property, excuse me, and its parcel sizes was a subject of a zone change application last fall requesting five-acre zoning. The P&amp;Z public hearing was well-attended, and no one in the neighborhood spoke in favor of the application. The P&amp;Z commission recommended unanimously to recommend a denial to the board. There was no other rural zone property anywhere near the subject lands. The few smaller parcels referenced in the application materials are not grouped together. They are grandfathered in and were created long before the current zoning. Many of them were created in the 60s and 70s before Bonner County and the state had land use laws. Now, case law has established a variance should not be of the landowner's making. It should be strongly associated with the physical limitations of the property or building site. The applicant's response in the application demonstrate that this request is of their own making. Their personal family desire to provide equal individual parcels to all their children does not constitute the legal rationale required for a variance. The staff determination states condition applying to the property do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity. Knowing that area quite well, I respectfully disagree. It's not correct, and there is no data that's been provided or evidence provided in the file to the contrary. Only generalized statements. Surrounding properties are in fact very similar to the physical characteristics of a mix of slope and benches. Based on the applications and staff's rationale, then all properties will become eligible for family splits with parcel sizes determined by the number of eligible family members divided into the acreage owned and variance is granted as needed. Both the applicant's application and the staff report state that the applicant's property rights will be negatively impacted if not allowed to split off into family members. However, by statute, there are no property rights associated with a variance. Bonner County Revised Code cites Idaho Code in referencing variance procedures and standards. And the Idaho Statute 676516 states, quote, "A variance shall not be considered a right or special privilege, but may be granted to an applicant only upon showing of undue hardship because of the characteristics of the site and that the variance is not in conflict with the public interest." So what that sets up is that any property right defaults to the public and existing neighboring landowners, who then can rely on the zoning and land use ordinances and the processes that the law intended. Lot size variances should be for small variations caused by circumstances such as a short section. You guys are familiar with that. It's a common occurrence within Bonner County and typically result with a parcel within a development being a few tenths to an acre shy of code compliance. Variances are also appropriate for grandfathered parcels having new development. But short of a planned unit development with an associated common area, variances should not be used to create multiple substandard parcels within the same development. And whereas staff has noted that this isn't a request to subdivide, it's a request to get to the subdivision. So without this, they can't do the subdivision that's proposed. The county has a history of numerous substandard parcels being created for various reasons, including family exemptions. We all know many of those properties have had issues over the years that not only affect the individual landowner and their neighbors, but have added to the administrative burden that the county carries on in perpetuity. You guys have seen that come in front of you. Family split provisions within county ordinances are limited and were specifically written so as to require compliance with the zoning standards. These family split rights are not based on the number of family members one has. No actual undue hardship caused by the characteristics of the property is provided or demonstrated. In fact, only hardship identified affects a personal goal and is a result of their own actions of changing plans after buying the property and/or purchasing too few of acres to divide among their family members. Additionally, it should be noted that many family splits don't result in long-term family ownership as Bonner County intended with family exemption. Experience shows us families have issues in plans change resulting in lots being sold outside the family. No guarantee is provided or offered that this property will continue to be used as stated in the application, let alone be held within the family. According to the staff report, Bonner County 1230, 12238 C1 specifically states, "The burden of proof is on the applicant." The applicant provided no information demonstrating required proof in the file and application submissions. However, given the information in the staff report, staff took the time to do effort of slope analysis on the property for them. There is no supporting data or specific references that have been supplied that staff used in making the slope analysis determination, but it appears inaccurate and couldn't have been ground truth, given this current snow cover. Those of us that know this area are aware there is a significant drainage of fairly steep side walls that runs north-south through the property. It receives considerable drainage from the north. The staff report and analysis makes no mention of the 14% grade within the access easement. As testified at the P&amp;Z hearing, but not included within the staff report, the access to the property is steep. Based on inclinometer readings, the angled driveway approach to Fish Creek Road is approximately 10%, not 2% as required by the county. This approach immediately leads to a 12%, excuse me, immediately leads to a 12% slope, which then increases to 14% due to a large outcrop, a solid bedrock immediately below the road surface. Those of, those of us familiar with this access know that the luge it becomes in the winter and what it becomes during mud season. The easement characteristics limit the ability to serve existing properties, let alone increasing the number of properties. Years ago, Commissioner Bradshaw had personal experience with this access and its limitations. Mr. Bradshaw and his wife hosted the neighborhood get-together at their place specifically, so guests would not have to drive this access to get to the neighborhood event. The get-together was held at their home specifically due to the access. Larger parcel zoning associated with the access and building slopes is part of Bonner County zoning rationale. This rationale isn't limited to the boundaries of the subject property, but also the access. Putting small lots on top of a steep mountain because the top is flat does not make rational sense if the access doesn't support that level of improvement. Fish Creek alone has its challenges, including a 12% slope at the angled intersection with Ice Road just below this property. Applicable codes, accurate information in the existing, I hope I'm not losing you, Commissioner McDonald.
No, no, I'm taking notes.
Applicable codes, accurate information, the existing planning and zoning commission, public testimony, deliberations, and record decision were not thoroughly considered. They appear to have been dismissed. Staff rationalizes determination by stating if the subject properties were all developed to maximum density, it would result in additional impact. The additional impact identified is from a second RV living unit being located on each parcel while ignoring the impacts of an additional single-family residence. Not only is this an unlike the density scenario, but a decision-making process that makes a determination based upon what a theoretical absolute maximum use density could be while ignoring the impact differences between those uses is flawed. Of note here is, this information that is contained in this part of the staff report for this rationale actually demonstrates that the applicants can reach their goal of remaining forested, having the whole family being able to be located on and have the enjoyment of the subject properties without a variance, and remain compliant with the ordinance standards. From our perspective, it appears the Griffins have, have. From our perspective, it appears the Griffins have had staff advocating their requests from the zone change application right through the administrative variance. With limited zone change application information, they received a supported staff report, followed by a one-week variance application review and a timely decisions approving the request. This was done utilizing incomplete application information and inappropriate rationale to justify that approval. Honor County Revised Code states specifically that the burden of proof is to justify the request lies with the applicant, not the appellant and not staff. The conclusions staff made are not based on application information, but rather information and incorrect parcel analysis compiled by staff. Where is at least the equal staff effort and advocacy for the neighboring landowners? Where is it for those that took time to provide the testimony at the P and Z hearing to oppose this, the zone change request, as well as for those that participated in the sub-area zoning? There's none. There's a two-inch section in a twelve-page report that lists the public comments. Staff goes on to say on page seven of the report that the lack of evidence, quote, non-quote, provided by the opponents at the P and Z evening. I respectfully disagree with that. There was evidence that I brought, was provided within the testimony, certainly at least at the level that was provided on the other, from the other position. The burden to provide evidence according to the code now lies with the applicants and no one else. But yet the applicants provided no such evidence and staff made the determination that they did. We believe it's time to control some of this nonsense that is occurring and keep portions of the county the way that landowners were told it would be kept. The Griffins in their testimony to the P and Z commission stated that they have fallen in love with the area and want to keep their land forested just the way it is now. That's great. Falls in line with the general community and our comprehensive plan goals. However, like many others, once in our paradise, they want to change the very rules and standards that we have lived by that have retained the paradise that we have. Once changed, it doesn't return. These proposed eight-acre parcels will be used by future landowners and buyers of lands in the area to rationalize a zone change to rule. They'll say, quote, "After all, the county in twenty-twenty-two approved substandard lots right in the middle of an ag forest zone." The Griffins can keep their land forested and using existing zoning standards can have their children all living on the property. The staff report specifically details the number of living units allowed. Joint ownership can provide the equal ownership goal stated within the application. Joint ownership is a very common occurrence. This will accommodate the Griffin family without having to have this special consideration that has disrupted the entire neighborhood. But please don't get me wrong. I think it's fine that the Griffins and staff develop a working relationship. I encourage that type of thing. And based upon their P and Z presentation, I'm sure the Griffins were present to work with. However, with the recent code changes that we've made in the county, staff has become the decision makers on items like this, which can be a challenging responsibility when also having to administer ordinances fairly and equally. We believe staff erred when they became the Griffins advocates at the expense of other landowners. There has been no outreach to us from the Griffins or staff, only notices. Some of the neighborhood residents discuss their frustration with me of testifying at the P and Z hearing, only to have an administrative decision nullify their time and efforts as well as a planning commission's decision. Therefore, there was no point in attending today's meeting. Their input didn't matter. I tried to address that, but how sad that I had to. I'm almost done. Thank God. The board knows of my experience, but I got, staff put a lot of stuff on the record. I have to address it.
Well, your facts, yeah.
The board knows of my experience and what I do professionally. You know, I am well aware of the gross pressures and the challenges Bonner County and our communities are experiencing. I've worked on many projects over the last thirty years. However, the county's never seen me bring this type of proposal forward and I wouldn't. It is an inappropriate use of the ordinance provisions. Yes, I have a personal connection with the effective property and I am passionate about this area of the county. But this application, the way determination was made is upside down from where we should be. The board has complete control over this decision. You are not pending by some ordinance provision living in your discretion. And Dan, I just. A couple minutes, points within the staff report. In order to get you guys to the decision that we would like you to see you make, I have to address a couple of things within the staff report. Um, page four, within the services, as noted, power, Northern Lights is the area, their power company out of the loop. But however, based upon my conversations with area landowners, there is no utility easement to this property. So I might be corrected on that, but to my knowledge, there is no easement known and has been that type of utility easement has been refused by the neighbors. See, I'm skipping over some of the notes, Dan.
That's okay. No, take your time.
Thank you.
It's only like two, two of four.
Okay, thanks. On page six of the staff report, uh, staff gets into, um, requests to approve, there's a condition that results in how, how many dwelling units happen that results in lessening of one. My thing is that, okay, now we're putting these type of restrictions on properties. So now we're picking that burden up as a public to be managing these things. And the following paragraph says it results in the overall replacement of two RV dwellings with one single-family residence. It will not result in an increase of any additional residential density on the site that is already permitted for. Well, okay, but what recognized traffic and land use data was used to be able to say that these single-family residences and RV uses are equal. I, I did, I have been provided none of that. The, uh, I'll go on to say that again, uh, the burden of proof on all these, uh, following sections within the staff report citing the Idaho code or the Bonner County Revised Code. They have the applicant's information and then they go along with staff's information. If you look at what the applicant provided, it can't lead to what was below. There is no supportive information supplied by the applicant in this, in these sections. The applicant states that there will be no increase in noise, light, flare, odor, fumes or vibration. And what they indicate is, is that they're going to keep the property in forest. If you're going to keep it in forest, where you have all this, then you don't need all the subdivided lots and the variance for those smaller lots. Page seven. Again, I don't feel comfortable, real comfortable with this commissioners because it's, if you put staff into a weird position with this stuff, I'm not attacking staff, but this is.
Yeah, I know. This is, this thing, it kind of sounds like you're attacking staff, but go ahead.
I know, and that's why I'm saying why, yeah, but staff made the determination, the P and Z did. You guys, we're not directing it. Staff made something, they came up with the determination, they came up with a document that made a decision and they listed their findings and conclusions within it and we can leave their flaw. So I have to be able to address this stuff and I have to try to hold them accountable for the same thing.
That's right.
Others accountable for. Thank you. Now, the staff report states that none of the comments at the public hearing within planning, at the planning commission level stated any evidence. Well, okay, let's stick with that. Where's the evidence that the applicants provided? The staff report itemizes that they did not provide that. So if, if the opponents at the P and Z were dismissed categorically because no evidence was provided, but an applicant can come in and ask for a variance of this and provide no information. And they get supported by it, this, like I said, we're upside down with this. Burden of proof lies upon the applicant to show whether the characteristics of the site conform to the sections of the subchapter. They have a short paragraph with, within their application that staff goes on to say, "The application for this request was submitted in accordance with the section." That's not true. The applicants did not supply any of the evaluating information that we need to staff's conclusion and the variance should have been denied at that point. Lesson. Findings of fact on page eleven. Having this decision first, I have to go through a couple of these. Number three. Actually, the wording in that, um, this finding proves that the family can be, can achieve all their goals and not need this variance. But number three can still be a finding within it or not. And number four. I think the, uh, the, the site is accessed by Fish Creek Road, a county-owned and maintained public right-of-way. Be a forty-foot wide private easement, I would suggest adding with a grade of up to fourteen percent. Number four continues on, "Fish Creek Road is approximately a tenth of a mile away from the site and has a speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour and is treated with gravel." I suggest adding and has grades of up to twelve percent. Number five. Keep the same wording as it does, but then add, "This access encroaches to Fish Creek Road at a ten percent of the county standards or two percent." The slope increases to fourteen, that increases to fourteen percent. Number six. I don't think it should be left in there because I think it's inherent. There is no supporting data for, or references by the applicant or staff to create this level of numbers such as eighteen point six. If a quad map was used to this, quad maps are certainly not of the level of accuracy to come up with this type of a site analysis. And then of course, number eleven, um, mentioned the site has access to services such as da-da-da-da-da. They don't have access to what services. Therefore, under the conclusions, we would suggest that the, under conclusion one, that property, the conditions of property do not, excuse me, do apply generally to the other properties in the same zone vicinity. It's the same slope and bench cartography as the surrounding area. Conclusion number two, special conditions and circumstances do result from the actions of the applicant. The applicants created the circumstances of their personal choices and state so much as so within their application. Number three, granting of the variance is in conflict with the public interest and it will be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare and material or be material interest of obvious improvements in the vicinity of the subject property. The access doesn't comply with county approach standards. It's unsafe. Therefore.
Oh, really? There's a therefore?
There's a therefore? Oh.
Do you wake up now? Therefore, area landowners believe the staff has erred in reaching this determination. Request the board correct this error by reversing staff's decision and not grant the variance. Thank you and thank you for honoring the time and request.
Okay, no problem. Thanks, Brian. Okay, let's go ahead and move into public comment. Um, I'll take anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the appeal, which would be opposed to the project. This is going to be in reverse.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Yeah, I know. I had to think about it. So this, since this is an appeal, those in favor of the appeal, which would mean you're opposed to the variance. Yeah. And if you're opposed to the appeal, you're in favor of the variance.
I would say just for clear, like the statute says that on, by the way, this is Bill Wilson for the record. The statute says that you guys get to hear this, um, as though it's a, 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 right? So let's just keep it for, for clarity's sake, um, if you, uh.
So we'll pretend that we're actually hearing this in the application.
Hearing with fresh eyes, that's what.
Okay, so then we'll then, so then we'll reverse everything I just previously said. And we'll go with those in favor of the variance. Um, is there anyone here in favor of the variance? That's a better way to put it. You've already, you've already spoken. I, you all have a chance to rebut, by the way.
Those opposed would be the.
Well, yeah. So this is, this is, you are for the variance, for us granting the variance?
Correct, yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, so my name is Anastasia Griffin. I am, uh, the only daughter of Roger and Avvis Murray Griffin. Um, and I just wanted to say, um, my parents obviously were not able to come. Um, I myself moved to their house back in the fall of twenty-twenty, uh, when my dad had his first stroke. So, um, that's when I first lived there, um, and I started, um, acting as a caretaker for actually both of my parents since my mother has had ongoing, ongoing, uh, reoccurring, um, uh, health issues, uh, throughout that time. Um, and my dad had a, um, pardon me, he had a severe stroke in, on December fifteenth. Um, and he spent two months in the hospital and so obviously he's still requires twenty-four seven care and not able to make it. Um, and my mother is also, um, has severe health problems and so that's why my brother and I are here. Um, just a little background on myself, I'm not going to make it in three minutes, just a little background on myself. Um, I moved here in January of twenty, twenty fifteen, uh, when I got out of the army. I've lived all over the country, all over the world. Um, I love it here in North Idaho. Uh, when my parents first purchased the property, um, I was actually living in, in Post Falls. And, um, but when they did purchase the property, I was very interested in helping them with it. Um, I, I did, um, what I could as far as thinning out some of the, um, the, uh, the ladder fuel and, and working with them, they, they did, um, I encouraged them and helped them to reach out to NRCS for, um, various, uh, projects in order for, for the soil health and, and the forest health. Um, and I was involved as much as I could, you know, I, I do have a full-time job, but that was, uh, my aim was to help them. And, um, it's only gotten more complicated as their health declined, um, and I did move up there. Um, but what I wanted to say was, um, one of the reasons why, um, they requested the ease, the variance and, and it's not, and, and they were probably not able to come up with some of the things because of their health, um, and, and they've done it all themselves, um, even through these health issues. Uh, one of the reasons why this, uh, variance was, was discussed is in order to make it easier for the family to help as far as taking care of the forest. You know, forty acres is impossible for, for two people in their, like, their mid-seventies. So that's why the family is, has come together to, to, in order to help that. Um, I, I have done what I could to, not only to help my parents through their health challenges, but also to do what I could for the land because I do love it. Um, but I also want to say, um, to you all and, and to, and to our neighbors. Um, I, um, I thank you for your involvement and for your care for this county. Um, I too have been, become concerned about the, the, the development that has happened, um, especially south of here. I do recognize that it's happening. Um, I do want to say truthfully to everyone that there is no development planned. I know that, you know, maybe you don't believe me, um, wrap it up. Okay. Um, so just really quickly, um, I just want to say that, um, everything that, that, that I've done, um, has been from a, a standpoint of, of stewardship of the land and a desire to, to help my parents' legacy and, and to care for the land. Um, but it also stems from my, uh, identity, um, as a Christian, and I want to say to everyone that no matter what happens here today, um, I, I'm okay with it and, and I have peace with it because um, of, of my realization that, um, this is, you know, that this is just one thing and it is, um, you know, there's, there's a lot more to life and there's, and I, I'm coming in from it from more of an eternal perspective because I realized that this world is, is actually not my home and, and, um, and as a Christian, I, I do believe that there is something better and I can have peace about, um, you know, what happens, I could, I could get into a car accident tomorrow and die, um, and that, that would be okay because I know that all things work together for the good of those who love God and are called according to his purpose. And he's given me peace about this. And so I just want to thank everyone for being here and for your concern and your love and care for this, for this state and this county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in favor of granting the variance? Anyone neutral? We actually had a guy yesterday in a hearing say he was neutral and he clearly was not neutral. There's no one I've ever.
Not even close.
Yeah, there's no one I've found that has been neutral. I don't even know why we have it. Okay, those opposed. How many people are opposed? Raise your hand. Okay, what we'll do is we'll start over here and we'll just work our way around if you guys don't mind. Instead of going off the list, please do it that way.
Make sure you.
Everything Brian said.
No, I was just gonna say thank you for what he said because I don't have to worry about saying any of that complicated stuff.
So for everybody, you gotta make sure you state your name for the record.
Yes, I am Bobby Bamer and I own property adjacent to the Griffins property. We purchased our property in two thousand fourteen. The Griffins purchased their property in two thousand seventeen. So when we purchased our property. We have three children, so I understand wanting to take care of your children. I get that. We looked long and hard looking for property that we could. Do what the Griffins are wanting to do with their children. We bought a property that has four parcels on it. So each of our kids have a parcel. I'm also taking care of my mother-in-law. She lives with me currently, so if you don't. See a little gray hair coming on. But. What I was just saying is the the Griffins bought the property knowing that they have five children. They bought the property knowing that there were four parcels. They bought this property. It's not, they're not a family who have lived here fifty, sixty, two generations. This is, they bought this property and then came on it then wanting to make that change. If they knew that they wanted to do a property and give, give equally to their children, then they should have bought something. That was already zoned for that. To expect the rest of us to accept these variances and it is a very slippery slope because just like Mrs. Griffin said, it is. This is a beautiful area and we have more and more people moving here. The more people that move here, they're gonna have families that move here with them and they're gonna want the same variance. And if you guys allow this variance to happen and the county makes this, then it will set that precedence for further. Requests for variance on properties. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Go ahead, Mrs. Quail. Make sure to identify your name for the, you gotta go up there. Yeah, you gotta up to the microphone. We have, we have to be able to pick it up on the recording.
I speak very loudly. Christine Quail is my name. And I just wanted to. At the beginning defer my three minutes to Brian Quail, so.
Good Lord.
I'm going to repeat everything he said in three minutes. No, I I am the sister-in-law of George Quail. Who owns the property there and agree with all of what's been said by the opposition. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. You, sir? Glasses?
Good day. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Scott Clasing, along with Giselle Knowles, who couldn't make it today because she's working. We own the property immediately below the property that's being discussed. That is also the property that has that ten to fourteen percent grade access road going up. It may be a forty-foot wide easement, but that road accommodates one vehicle, one way. And it does not handle vehicles going up and down at the same time. So all of this has an impact, going from four to five lots. We got one additional well. The bulk of us in this area are strained with less than four and a half gallons per minute water. And so we cringe at the thought of losing, losing those accesses. The previous rezoning requests discussed ample numbers of wildlife of concern in that area. Maybe it's not classified as critical habitat, but we've got bear, mountain lion, bobcat, elk, moose, whitetail, coyote. I could go on and on. I've got game pictures to back it. You know, that, so the net of it is, is overall, I I'm against the the variance being accepted. And to to further the comment made earlier about the process being upside down. If we go back to the previous rezoning requests that approved. In the preliminary steps to accept that rezoning and later they rejected it after we brought all the information to the table. I'm losing my approach here, but 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 the point is, is even then. It was, oh, I know what the point is, is is the, there's a zoning law in effect. And yet the planning staff overrode the zoning law. I don't understand that process. To me, that's upside down. What they should have done is the initial recommendation should have followed the zoning law that's in existence. And yet the initial recommendation was not that. So with that said, I'm requesting that the variance be denied. Thank you for your time and and like earlier comments made, we want good neighbors. Everybody, especially during this time, there's never been a more critical time of need. So we all need to find a way to get along and and do it in a good, proper manner. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. You sure with the mask?
Gentlemen, my name is Jay Omenson. And I'm a neighbor. I live three hundred and thirty feet from the property, so I didn't get the mailings, but that's okay. I thoroughly agree with Brian. My my. Contention is the fact that everything over and over again in here, it's by no fault of the owner, by no impact of the owner. It is entirely. That's why we are here is because trying to satisfy the desires. Of the owner and as Brian said, the staff had clearly pointed out. That all of these people can live on that forty acres. With no problem whatsoever. What is the, I see it as a big issue. To divide it into five pieces, especially as it was designed, we have from the. Original request, a drawing that makes no sense at all, five, one piece in the middle and the other four around it. Due to the topography I'm familiar with here. This isn't gonna work out very well. It said the, there, there's no detriment to the public. In there, they do. The Panhandle Health Department. Include, sent a letter including concerns about septic planning. Before dividing the properties. The staff did not address that. One bit, septic can be an issue around there, something the drainage is marginal. Again, the road, everybody, and it said. Nobody said much in opposition. Or could prove any, provided any proof about safety issues. It's hard to provide proof about future safety issues, yes, with. You know, the small family that's living there now. Not a problem. Divided up five times, sell it off. Now, each of those five. New owners are gonna do something else. They're each gonna probably want to have a well, they're each gonna want to have a septic tank. They're all gonna be trying to drive up and down that road and quite honestly. I have dodged, I'll bet a half a dozen vehicles sliding off of that driveway. Onto Fish Creek Road and the rest, from safety standpoint, the rest of Fish Creek Road is a big issue. I don't know how much time you guys spend driving it, but.
Been up there a few times.
New people, yeah, new people tend to drive in the middle, especially in the winter time. They tend to be happening everywhere.
I was gonna say, that's pretty common.
Yeah, yes, and I have, I personally, in my forty-five, forty-four years of living up there. I bet I have pulled out three dozen people. From the ditch and seen wreckers pull another dozen. I'm good. I thank you very much. I just want to state my opposition.
Great, thanks, Jay.
It's a safety issue.
You wish to speak? By the way, you don't have to be, feel like you're compelled to speak, but if you wish to speak. It's not like you're forced to testify.
My name is Lynn Settle. I live and own property at the end of Fish Creek Road. So I'm not on that map, but seven tenths of a mile from the property in question. I want to agree with everything that Brian Quail said. He did a very good presentation there and I think he covered a ton of points that. Really fast and I hope they were all adequately digested, but it was really good. My biggest concern is that, you know, as much as I understand their family plight and their health issues with their parents and all that stuff, and I feel bad for them of all that. But the bottom line is that kind of story really shouldn't come into play as regarding variances. Well, I understand variances are based on. Topography, land, things with the land you can't handle, you know, deal with cliffs, easements, whatever. And to just do it based on how many kids you have to chop it up, I mean. That's gonna happen all over the place, you know, pretty soon people will say, well, I have eight grandchildren. I'm gonna chop it up into eight pieces over here and that just. Doesn't seem like it's. Should be accepted or or considered. And then the other thing is a comprehensive plan states very clearly. That there's a concern about small acreage private properties being intrusion, intrusion into state and public lands. And. There are several government land properties around that. To the northeast, there's a big one sixty National Forest. To the west, there's a whole bunch of state and government land and to the south, Huckleberry Mountain, there's. Got a whole bunch of government land, US. BLM land, that sort of thing. So the bottom line there is also the concern is we're not supposed to be chopping up lands near all this public land. Because you want to have larger acreages intermixed with the public land. So I think that needs to be taken into account as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else? You know, okay, we'll go and go into rebuttal.
So. There, I think, have been a lot of. Good points brought up. Certainly, I was not. Prepared to try to deal with all contingencies or. Opposition to that. Personally, and since I am as well, living up there right now and trying to caretake for my parents who can't be there. All I'm, I'd like to do my best to be a good neighbor. Just, just a couple of things. That was brought up that. That we, that my parents did not provide any guarantee or evidence that they would not. Further subdivide or sell off individual parcels. My only response to that is, how can they? Because no one can know the future. And but the thing is, say this variance is rejected, what's the stuff doing that anyways? So that's kind of a, seems irrelevant thing to bring up. It may not be, but. That that would be my response to that. For the safety, I mean, in terms of the road access, yeah. I'm the one who had to try to sand down the access, the easement road to Fish Creek. And it took multiple hours of effort. I I I drive up and down there going to work Monday through Friday and then sometimes on weekends, so I agree. That's something that I would love if it was a better grade. That's not in my control. I don't see how that can be a controlled factor. That's just a fact of that's what it's like up there. So I don't really understand, you know, that this variance should not be granted based simply on that. And I, there was something else I, I can't remember right now, so. That's all I have right now.
A lot of it was pointed at staff, so. It could probably be answered by them, hopefully.
So staff. I don't know why I'm looking at you.
I would like to point out a couple of things. Particularly in general provisions of variances, it says a variance is a modification of the bulk or placement requirements of this title as to lot or parcel size. So this request is not overriding the zoning code or the Bonner County device code. It is, this request is in compliance with with the code. Also, each variance is assessed individually. We do not go back to look at previous variances that have been granted so that it sets a precedence for future variances.
So there's no precedent.
Each file is new.
Nice try.
Each file is looked at in a, in a fresh way. Then I will like to address steep slope to the, to the access, steep access to the site. We have a lot of provisions in our code that access steep slopes, particularly stormwater management and geotechnical analysis where it is required. And it is required for any kind of development, whether it is development of a road or putting in a building. Or any other development per se. This is not a request for a zone change. The previous request was for a zone change and that was what the file was heard for the first time. In this particular request, the applicant is not requesting to change the zone, not requesting to change the use of the property or the land use designation. It stays within the same designation. The request is to change the parcel size, which is permitted by this. Which is, which can be requested as per this part of the code, subchapter two point three variances. As per. According to the comments about wildlife. We noticed it to Idaho Department of Fish and Game and they particularly replied. The Idaho Department of Fish and Game does not have any comments to submit for this application. If the agency does, does reply in such a manner, there is no way for us to push forward and ask them to. To give us a comment saying that there is wildlife or there is critical wildlife habitat on the property. That is all I have.
You also cover the the septic issue because I think there's a misunderstanding about when septic comes into play. And we see this a lot during any kind of planning hearing. People think that. You know, at this phase is when you look at septic, that's not true. It's, it's when they have, they pull a BLP, if you would cover that.
Yes, so. As of now, we, we, we are implementing this in our code recently that. Any BLPs that will be issued, they have to go through a Panhandle Health District review before the final inspection of the BLP. So anytime the properties were to be developed with the number of residences that they are permitted, they would have to go through the septic.
And BLP is building location permit.
With a short flat process as well. Yes, it's, it's a requirement. The agencies are notified. Again, they have to go through the whole process.
And as far as, as far as slope analysis, can you cover the slope analysis issue Brian brought up?
Yes, so. I will go to. The environmental, environmental standards of the code, which talk about. Steep slopes. So our code, this part of the code requires the geotechnical analysis. That is required for all proposed building sites, roads, driveways, or other developments. Where any of the following conditions may apply, soils are highly erodible or where this. Slope succeed thirty percent. So this is all covered in the code. Anytime they come to us wanting to put a road or a driveway in or wanting to build a, build a residence in that area, they will have to go through this.
Right, but how did you arrive at the gradient?
Okay, so about.
As far as, as far as analyzing the slope on the property.
So our, our information about the slopes comes from United States Geological Survey. We, the percentages for those are as close as we can get and that is why I have constantly repeated in the staff report, it's an approximate number. It is not a definite eighty-one point six or fifteen point three, whatever it is. It's an approximate number. It's as close as we can get.
Is there anything code that requires staff to go out to the site and and delineate the actual slope? On any given property for a request like this for variance?
No, there isn't.
It's typical for staff to review against the tools that we have. And so it was a thorough review of the application.
So in going back to the slope in the driveway, because that came into question. If they should decide to develop, then that's when the geotechnical analysis will have to be done.
They will definitely have to submit a stormwater review, definitely.
But not during, not during this variance phase or even a zone change phase or any of that, that happens at the time.
At the time of the development, yes.
But the substandard road, we're falling in below the ten, ten allows substandard road, but the five does not, is that correct?
Yes.
So how, how do you propose that we're under the ten?
Over the five.
Yeah, well, I mean, how do you propose to get around the fact that this road is obviously substandard, that everybody has testified to the fact?
Correct, and so the, the road would be addressed through the short. This creating five lots still triggers the short, which means the road standard you're gonna have to be able to do.
So it would have to be.
To build some, they'll have to be built some sort of grade. Through the property.
If they develop.
The access.
But it's not.
We just have to reveal all.
Okay. Anything else? Do you want to go ahead and you want some time, Mel?
You might want to get to a mic yourself.
I I assisted with an appeal. Sometime ago and. It it made me realize how easy it is to pick apart a staff report. There's, you're always gonna find flaws, you're always gonna find mistakes, you're always gonna find shortcomings or whatever. There, there are, it's easy to do because we all have different perspectives. There, there are, it's easy to do because we all have different perspectives based on on, on how we look at files and how we look at codes. And that's why we have the board here to, to figure out, you know, the what the standards are and what the.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, that's, that's why you.
We're ready to pass the buck. Thanks.
Make these hard decisions, right? If we, if we base this on precedence, then this is a no brainer because these are granted several times a year for the last many years, right? Lot size minimums come before the board on often. Uh, last, just last month, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a point nine one acre parcel in an R ten zone. So they do occur. Um, for whatever reason, the, the point is, is that the board needs to consider, you know, what those standards are. And, and it, and it may be worth continuing and looking, asking the applicant for some, some more information if you're not satisfied or if you're satisfied with the results to, to make a decision either way. But uh to accuse the staff of being an advocate for the applicant is unfair and wrong. We review the application against the standards in the code with the tools that we have available to us. Okay, if we were to require every, do we need to put in the code that every applicant needs to go out and hire a private planner and a private survey to turn in an application to work on their property? I, I think that's, I, I think that's government overreach. And we need to be careful with that. And, and so the applicant turns in the best that they have. We asked for more, but nevertheless, we review against the tools that we have. We, yeah, we're not advocating for an applicant here. We're reviewing the application against the standards of the code. Um, again, the it's, it's here for you, the board, to determine if, if you feel that the standards have been met or not. Um, and we'll support your decision.
Well, would you make sure we have the, I don't know if they have it in front of them, but at least have the standards for those criteria for the approval or denial of the variance up on the screen so we can have those
And you think I.
You have to zoom that in, man.
You don't have a touchscreen.
Why don't you read?
I guess we can look up here.
Yeah, conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. Um, that's a tough one for me. It, it, it's.
There's no, no more public.
Yeah, there's no more public comment. Sorry.
So.
That was my.
If, if the board is approving the side plan that was presented, I understand. Okay, if you look at the topography, I, and, and again, that's why you may want to ask for more information. But if you, because there is a stream cutting through the property.
But the property is, Bill Wilson, for the record, the property, the two parcels together are just a square.
That's correct.
Okay, so the, the lot, the side or the, the shape itself doesn't lend itself to any particular it's got some weird shape parcel that would have unique characteristics for that purpose.
No, other than the, other than the stream.
If anything, it would be the topography.
Yeah, the problem would affect the, the parcel, the actual parcels.
But the problem is, is they laid them out.
Yep.
So funny that it, it didn't take it, if there probably is some impediments on that piece of property. You know, I mean, the, the stream, the steeper slopes, but that's not the way they laid it out.
Wait, hold on. So we, should we go into deliberation?
Okay, well, why don't we, are we, are you done rebutting?
Yep.
Okay, so we, we are going to go ahead and move into deliberation.
Sorry, guys, just trying to.
Go ahead. Thanks, Bill.
The right path there.
You know, once you get past two o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We gotta be rained back in.
So guys, again, I, as is my, my typical practice when we begin deliberations, I had asked just to give you guys a bit of guidance on how we deliberate or what we should consider. I asked Milton to have those criteria upon the screen so that we are all on the same page and we're making discussions about those things and not deviating into stuff that may not be relevant. Um, and I think, I think Jeff, you were getting ready to discuss that first condition regarding particular parts of the
Property.
File that have no, that are unusual and then are not circumstances over which the applicant has no control. So if you want to start there.
So yeah, I'll just, I can start there, but I'll probably back up just a little bit further. Um, one of the things that I see in this is like, I don't think this is a proper use for this part of the code. Um, this, this is, this is making another parcel. Um, if they came in and said, hey, we got this steep slope, got a creek at the bottom, we want to make that one twelve and this one six or whatever, and still come up with the same. I'm like, I'd be all for that. And, and I, and I do feel for the family and, and I, and I understand that, you know, hey, we'd love to have everybody get their equal portion of this piece of property that's very special to them. But we say it time and time again, we got to follow the law. That's what our job is, is the law sits in front of me. This does not fit. And, and again, if, if the topography would have been utilized in, in some of these parcels, I still don't know that I'd go for it because it's creating an extra parcel. I mean, if you're just trying to make it make more sense so that the, you know, so you can get to it or you can have a better building site. I'd go along with all of those things, but I think this is a total misuse of this. I mean, to me, it's almost a skirt of the.
NLD.
Yeah, no, of the of this. The rezone, R five rezone. It could. It doesn't have to.
Is there something in code that precludes a variance from creating another parcel?
As far as like, you mean?
I mean, it's, okay.
And, and it is true.
So we can't, so you can create, I'm just trying to see, because I have the same concern you had. I think, first I look at this, I'm going, well, this is an MLB plus. MLB plus one.
Well, it is.
Well, then. Right, well, I know, but we're there's, I, I have a process here, so.
Yeah, he's talking to himself.
To answer your question, Dan, um, Milton and I both, you know, we went over that portion. A variance, it does state that a variance can, can be used for lot size minimums under certain circumstances. Um, now, whether or not it applies here, again, that's why you have to apply these criteria. And I think what Jeff just spoke to was probably like very, very accurate that in the case of an unusual lot shape or unusual topography, that those are the things that are, are mentioned there. And those are truly outside the scope of, or outside the ability of the applicant to control. Um, now, whether or not they can use that as a, as a justification for additional lots is a different question. But it can be used for, for smaller lots in appropriate circumstances. So we're clear.
Yeah, that's, that's clear. So before we get into the nuts of both of this, I want to, I want to make a couple of statements here. Um, as we've already said before, a lot of this stuff, and we see this a lot in, in planning here for some reason, that a lot of the concerns here are concerns that would happen next if they decided to develop, develop. They self pull a building location permit that kicks in all kinds of other standards that have to be met. Um, including the road. By the way, my driveways, I go up over two pieces of thirty percent grade in my driveway. So it's not, you know, it's not a tragedy to go over fourteen. As far as the staff goes, when I started back in twenty seventeen, one of the things that planning had a somewhat rocky reputation for being the Department of No. People would come in and, and come into the planning department looking for help and they would say, well, you have a problem. Um, we won't tell you what the problem is, but when you figure it out, come back and we'll, and we'll go ahead and issue the permit once you fixed it. Um, we changed the paradigm and I said, listen, even though we're government, we should stop acting like government. We're supposed to be here to help the people of the county, which includes the landowners are coming in and putting in an application. So instead of being the Department of No, be the department that actually finds solutions for folks. This board is, are, we're big advocates of private property rights. So it's your property, as long as you can figure out a way to wedge it into the law, we're going to support it. And that doesn't go just for these folks. It goes for all of you in this room. If you ever come to us and trust me, someday you may, and we've seen this in hearings before, we'll have someone who just came to us a year before and requested something that are now opposing for their neighbor. And that disturbs me because it's not very neighborly. Um, and I'm not a big fan of it. But what it appears to me that planning has done here is they've done, just as we've tasked them, to try to help a, a landowner provide a solution as government should. It rarely ever does. So in defense of a planning staff, Brian, I gotta adamantly disagree with you and I really take exception to you coming at your staff. They're doing the job that they've been tasked to do. Let's see if we can come up with some kind of creative solution and not just, you know, hunt and force the landowner to try to figure it out. Even outside of the fact that the owners themselves have some health issues and and that, to me, that creates an even bigger need for, for help. Um, I think my opinion on this is I'm concerned about the way the layout is for the parcels.
Uh, well.
You can't respond. He's got to let me rattle on. This is unlike my wife and I, where when I speak, she interrupts me and it, yeah, it's a different deal. Um, so um because I do think that one could make an argument for the extra parcel. If you can figure out how to make it work with, with the issues that are topographical, which are, are outside of your control. The shape of the parcels, the two parcels together are not, are, are not uncommon. But you do have that stream running through there. When I first looked at this file, I'm looking at the stream and going, oh, why is that big diamond sitting there? Straddling the stream, that doesn't make sense to begin with. So that's what gave me some pause. Um, I think um for me, I would rather see this go back, have you go back and take another look at this and see if you can figure out a better way to skin this cat. Um, as far as a family goes, and this is just my opinion, um, I would look at, consider a family trust if you want to have shared ownership. That's not an official statement. That's just my, our family, our property is a family trust. My property has got a thirty percent slope driveway. So um, that would be my recommendation is let's let him take another crack at this and see if there's a better way to make this fit. That doesn't bump up against the law.
Dan, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So then are you, are you proposing that the board uh asking for a motion to deny the application or are you remanding it back to?
I'm gonna, I would, I would rather remand it back to staff.
I believe that the code does allow for that practice. Let me just check here real quick.
This is why we carry a attorney with us everywhere we go.
I guess I can go ahead and go to.
So in, in practice, it doesn't actually have a huge, uh, it's not, probably not a functional difference. Um, other than maybe for appellate purposes, because if you were to deny.
If we're denied, they'd have to pay the application fee again.
That's true.
Right.
But they could also just reapply. That would be fun. That would be fine. If you remand, then yeah, they would, it would still be an open file that they don't have to repay the fee. That is a difference.
And that's what I was thinking. I just don't want to have to pay the fee again. If there's a way that they could figure out how to make this work, have the parcels actually respond to the the issue of the topography, which is something out of your control. Then it's, I think it's worth taking at least another crack.
It may be worth a question to Milton, that Milton, if there was a remand, what sort of additional information would be helpful to? Would there, would you embellish or change your opinion? Like, is that a useful practice or would it be better to simply do not? Um, I, I just don't want to further administrative, you know, more administrative practice if it's not going to result in a different outcome.
Um, the yeah, well, what he's talking about is either have him go back and either figure out a way personally to address this.
Yeah.
Or, or they would, they would have to, so there are several ways to approach it. For they, they're allowed four lots currently and the code only allows for four single family dwellings. So if they wanted five single family dwellings, they're still going to need another variance. So it would be a different type of application. So they can't just go and have five full-size houses on the property. Even if they kept it all intact, it still would require variance. And so.
Would be applied to deed restriction on the, on the destruction.
Again, though, it's still, it still requires a variance because our code only allows, you know, one, one per density.
I just, there's no way we can do a trade. Obviously, okay, you know, no, our, no additional RV dwelling units, no additionally.
And that's, that's what I think staff was trying to address.
Right.
When, when.
No, I can see that.
But we lowered it by one.
That was a lot.
No, I understand. And so again, if there's something specific you want us to go back and do, ask the applicant to redraw the side plan to go do an, an analysis of, of you know, maybe get a survey out there and find out where the best lines are. I don't know. I, it's.
Yeah, I just think there's better options here. And it may, and it may be.
It may be best to just start over as well.
Okay.
Because if they come up with a short, they're going to have to come up with a short plan, which means they're going to have to try to figure out how to make that road work, which is possibly not even doable, from what I've heard from everybody here. It, it's, it's rocky. It's rocky. It's all kinds of things. I don't want to lead them down a path that, I mean, right now, they can divide it into four through an MLD, or they can leave it the same and use family trust or whatever they want to do. They can do a lot of different things and still get to where they want to be. I, I truly don't. I don't see this, this, I, I don't see this as the right use for this myself, but.
Yeah, and as far as setting precedence, this, this is a variance request. It does not set precedence.
I'm not talking about.
No, I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to the, to the audience, sorry. Um, so that's a fallacious argument to begin with, but yeah, it does not set precedence. It's a variance. Um, but they look planning and we look at each one of these individually, even so much of the zone changes, technically, we look at all of them individually. Right. So. Um, well, then I, I, you know, I don't have an issue with the motion denied because I think it's going to be, they, they have some more work on, on there and they need to be able to make this work. And there's, there's some other options out there.
Okay.
Chairman, I have a secret question if I may.
Sure.
You know, on.
Can?
You know, it's after two o'clock. You're not supposed to.
Well, wait a second. Well, we haven't allowed the rest of.
Yeah, we have.
A lot of the audience has wanted to.
Why don't you, you're gonna have to go off to hold it for afterwards, sorry.
It was just a secret question. I, I don't want to make a mistake here.
Okay.
That's fine if you want, if, if the board wants to.
Go ahead, bring it on. We let Brian talk, we let Brian talk for an hour and a half.
Not something that you guys would use for substantive purposes.
Right.
Like, for the, you're ruling because you closed deliberations, but if it's just perceived.
Go ahead.
No problem.
Okay, on, on both these motions, whether you're going to approve it or deny it, this language in there, this action does not result in the taking of private property. I may suggest you do not have that in your motion because I, unless regulatory taking evaluation has been done, placed in the record. That, that language in senior ways of that has been done. And if it has not, I suggest you take that out.
I, I completely disagree. Completely disagree. Um, so regulatory takings analysis is something that the applicant or that the agreed property owner can request after the fact. But uh, the planning staff and you, the board can make that determination at this stage. Um, having still not completed that based on your review of the file. And if, uh, if the regulatory takings analysis is requested after the fact and, and bound to, and some difference of opinion is found there, it can be addressed, but um, I, I think it's, it's okay to leave that in this statement.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Are you ready?
I, yeah, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reverse the staff's decision to approve the file VA zero zero three six two one, requesting a twenty percent variance in the required minimum lot size from ten acres to eight acres for the purpose of creating five eight acre lots, parcels for family on approximately forty acres of unplanted land in section fourteen, township fifty-five, north range three west, Boise, Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, based on the following conclusions. Um, refer to foregoing conclusions.
Jeff, at this point, you would just say for the reasons stated during deliberation.
Okay, for all the reasons stated during deliberation, the decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt.
Now, hold on.
Don't adopt the findings of fact.
On the staff report because the staff.
Yeah, where's finding the facts so to prove, yeah.
You simply.
Say the end. I'm gonna move down to.
Private property takings.
Yeah.
Uh, the action that could be taken, if any, to obtain the variances, uh, what, what is?
Just go down to this line right here. This action does not.
This action does not result in the taking of private property. The action that could be taken, if any, to obtain the variance is to file a new application with the planning department and meet the standards required by Bonner County Revised Code or appeal the Planning and Zoning Commission decision to the county commission. or appeal the planning and zoning commission decision to the county commissioner. Where we're already at.
Nope, that part was, so that the, the, it would be to appeal this decision to the district court. If they.
Appeal the overturn to the, yeah, the district.
Yeah, appeal to the district court, wow.
There you go.
Okay, I'll have to work on those a little bit.
Can you repeat that? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, so we have a motion and I will step down from the chair and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes and it is three.